Yeah, welcome to the Village Board work session. Today is Monday, April 12. So first item on our work session agenda is discussion with Susan Favate of EFJ Planning regarding our proposed zoning amendments to establish a floor area ratio. Want to just give the thumbnail sketch, Susan?
Sure, sure. And nice to meet the new faces. Russ and Jeff, good to see you. I haven't seen you in a couple of years at least. It's been a while. I think most of you were on previous calls, but I will give a quick recap. There had been some concerns last year about the scale development in some neighborhoods in Pleasantville. The fact that, or the concern that existing regulations which primarily control bulk through setbacks and through lot coverage, that those were not necessarily really capturing the potential for larger new homes. And so we were asked to look at the potential for floor area ratio controls to be instituted in the village. Many, many other communities in Westchester have them started out for, I would say about 10 or 15 years ago. We started to see it more and more, and it's really become a pretty uniform tool for controlling bulk in any building, but in particular in single-family residential zones where we're seeing more and more of the envelope getting pushed. People basically want to max out both on the coverage and the size of the homes as well as height. So that was our charge was to look at floor area ratio. So we basically did some analysis early on. We looked at the existing floor area that's in all of Pleasantville's existing development, and we did that with a combination of data from Westchester County, which is actually really good data and fairly recent. And then we supplemented that with, I would say, a handful of more recent development from our use on newer homes that maybe weren't fully captured in the county's data. So we think we developed a pretty full picture of what the existing basically home sizes in Pleasantville are. And so based on that, we looked at the medians by lot size. We came up with a sliding scale of proposed floor area ratio maximums. And we went a little bit above the median. We felt that if we just went straight with the medians, we were actually getting concerned about creating a lot of non-conformity. So-
Briefly share here that screen. Got that?
Yep. Yeah. So you can see, and we also wanted to compare to some sort of peer communities. I'm not saying that Pleasantville is exactly like any of these, but you know, other villages that have similar types of sliding scale. If they are, it's useful to see kind of how you compare. And so what you see in the, or the other regulations, and it's not necessarily apples to apples. There may be particular things that these other communities exclude or include in FAR, but it's a decent match. And so what you see in the dark green column under Pleasantville is the median FAR for each of these lot sizes, you know, based on the existing development that you have. And so what you see in the light green is what we proposed. And we proposed starting at 7,500 as your minimum lot size where FAR would be applicable. And the reason for that is that that is the minimum lot size in all of your single-family zones. And we were concerned that some of the lots that maybe don't meet that minimum lot size requirement probably already don't conform to zoning in some way, or if they do conform, we would be at risk of making them, you know, non-conforming now with this regulation. And that they're likely pretty well controlled in terms of the size of homes that they can build on those smaller lots because of all these other constraints. So we decided to start at 7,500 as the minimum. And so you see that anything below that is considered exempt. And so you can see the proposed max FARs. And when you compare them with your peer communities, we felt that it was important not to be maybe the most strict, but also not to be the most linear, kind of strike that balance of, you know, of allowing some reasonable development, but also, you know, not being the toughest guy on the block necessarily. And so when you look at that, you know, you start out at 0.48. That is, you know, a bit more generous than, for example, Scarsdale or Irvington at that 7,000 square foot lot size. It's not quite as generous as the Town of Amerenac, but it's kind of in the mix. And then when you get further down the scale into the larger lots, so down at the very bottom, you can see 0.285. It is, you know, definitely less strict than Scarsdale or Irvington. A little bit more generous than Bronxville and Town of Amerenac, but pretty close to them as well. So we felt that it was, you know, a good place to be in. You don't think you want to have a reputation for being completely anti-development, but it's something that we felt was pretty manageable from the development community. And we were also very cognizant of, you know, the impact on existing homes, you know, in terms of non-conformity. So we did look at that and we, you know, we generally aim, there's no kind of rule of thumb, but we generally aim when we're looking at new zoning not to create more than 10% of existing development for not having it be non-conforming. So we're pretty close to that. When we ran the numbers with these proposed numbers, we're at about 12.6% would be of homes would be newly non-conforming under the, you know, existing homes would be non-conforming according to FAR. A good amount of those, although, are on smaller lots where they're already pretty maxed out. So basically, you know, they would be, they would be hitting up against a coverage limit anyway. And they'd most likely, almost with any type of expansion, be dealing with a variance because of coverage. So we felt like that was a little bit less of a concern since they'd be going to the zoning board in any case. So we felt like this was, again, a pretty good balance of, you know, not, not making it terribly onerous for existing homeowners, but, but also doing a pretty good job controlling development. And when you look at the other end of the scale, the larger lots, what you see there is that a lot of those lots still have a lot of room to give in terms of development. So just having the coverage requirement would not necessarily limit them that much. Whereas, you know, having an FAR requirement does give them a bit of a limit, still allows, you know, well-sized homes on those larger lots, but not quite as large. And Peter, if you can go to the next page, I think we have a little table here on the next page. Yeah, we were looking just at the minimum lot size in these three single-family zones. So, you know, the existing, the existing limit on building coverage is 20%. So if you use that according to those minimum lots, you would get those footprints. So 2,400 square feet in the R-zone, 3,000, the double R, and then 4,356 in the triple R-zone. So assume that, you know, the size of that home would be roughly double the building footprint. For example, in the R-zone, you could have about a 4,800 square foot house under the existing regulations. If you were to impose the proposed FAR numbers, what that does is for the R-zone, for example, it brings that total square footage down to about 4,560. And if you distribute that evenly on both floors, that's, that building footprint is about 2,280. So you can see it definitely limits it. It limits the, you know, the building footprint, it limits the size of the home. It doesn't, you know, enormously limit it, but it does provide a limitation. And you can see as you get larger, that limit is a bit more. But again, those larger lots have, you know, a lot of flexibility. And we also wanted to make the point, I'm hopeful that you all were able to review the memo, that builders and developers do have options here. So, you know, they can max out that building footprint. Maybe they have a smaller upper floor, which in some cases makes for, you know, a nice architectural look where you have less of a, you know, box, for example. Or they could just have a smaller footprint overall and a smaller, you know, smaller looking house. But they do have some options. And then we also did want to look at things like attics and basements and how we're treating those. Had some discussion at a previous meeting with you all, those who were in attendance at that earlier meeting, about, well, you have these existing homes, what if they want to finish their attic? That's not creating any new bulk. The home is there. And so, you know, we thought that was a good point. So we would suggest exempting existing homes, they can be existing as of the date of the adoption of the ordinance, exempting those from the attics being counted toward FAR. Now, they would still have to meet building code regulations. They still have to sprinkler it. So we don't think it's a result in flood of finished attics, but it could result in some. However, for new construction, those attic spaces, habitable attics would count because they do contribute to the bulk of homes. They do contribute to the appearance of how big those homes are. So that's attics. And then when it comes to basements, similarly, we, you know, in consultation with Robert and Mayor and Eric, we would suggest including habitable basement space as well in the FAR. And the reason for that is that if we're kind of counting all three of those potential livable floors, then we're not allowing you to get kind of a freebie in your basement that then allows the more visible part of your house to be bigger. So we're kind of accounting for all of that livable space. And then the last thing, and then I'm going to stop talking and take some questions, is that we previously talked about this as well. In some cases, you see homes, especially newer homes, where they might have like a two-story foyer in the entrance, where it's not technically floor area because it's not a second floor, but it is space that contributes to bulk. So we've looked at some of the other communities in Westchester, and it's not uncommon to treat that space as bulk and counted in FAR in some fashion, so that you can't, you know, build these sort of huge entrances and not sort of have that count, because again, it does, does contribute to the appearance of bulk. So I'm going to pause there. We do have some other potential or suggested changes dealing with building height, but I feel like it's a good place to pause with floor area ratio. If there are any questions.
So just, just to put a point on its current impact, fair to say, Robert, a regulation of this kind, if enacted, has no effect on the vast majority of people who apply?
As Sarah mentioned, it would come down to whether these houses existed or it's brand new.
Right.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, you were going to say something?
No.
Oh, the part would be, as stated, the existing homes would basically not have to apply certain spaces. So I would say that the majority of the people currently with existing houses would not be near where the limits are at this point. They have some room to grow.
And fair to say that we're not, obviously, given our typical lot size and the like, seeing houses 4,000, above 4,500 square feet, generally speaking, either? Right. So, I mean, in essence, the idea here, per what Susan said, is to sort of keep things in scale, and by keeping things in scale and avoiding a lot of non-conforming uses, to sort of try to identify what makes sense in our neighborhoods, even in neighborhoods with bigger lots and bigger houses. And I think likely the regulations that are manifested here don't affect what most people would do with most properties.
Any questions before we keep going?
I guess, I guess I had one question about the basement part that surprised me a bit. Since I, my sense was, was that this, this study was based on the visibility of the home? And since the basement is not visible to the neighbors, why is the, why the livable basement would be included? And I guess my second, or part B of that is that a basement's livability can fluctuate based on, I mean, any homeowner around here knows that one day your basement could be livable, and then a month later you could find out you have a moisture problem and it's no longer a livable space.
Right. Well, I'll answer the second part first. The livability aspect, the habitable space, is based on the height, floor to ceiling. Is that right, Robert, the way it's defined in the village? It's sort of, it's height above grade?
Correct, correct. The midpoint of the ceiling height of that lower level. And if that is, if more than half of that is above grade, it's a basement. If less, it's a cellar.
Right. Oh, so if the whole thing were below ground theoretically, then it wouldn't be a basement?
Correct. It would not count.
Right, a cellar would not count.
You can have habitable space in the cellar by building code, but it wouldn't be deemed a basement and therefore would not be applicable to the FAR.
Right. Like, I'm, I'm in my basement right now. And I'm looking, I have a little like window at the top of the ceiling, so the majority of the basement is well under grade. And probably under your regulations, it would count as a cellar. It's fully finished, not fully, but mostly finished. So it's kind of like, it would be like free space if you were in that situation. That would not count toward your FAR.
For the exact reason you commented, Michael, it doesn't really affect the appearance of the house. But we have had some circumstances where either with the existing grade or because a development proposal manipulates the existing grade, you end up with essentially a whole nother floor at the back, opening out to whatever, that creates the appearance, if indeed, the reality of a much bigger house.
Basically, a three-story house in the back.
Right.
Yep. It looks like, Peter, you have a question?
Yeah, I just make two comments. One is, I think you all have really threaded the needle very well, and you've responded to some of the concerns, some of the ones that Susan hasn't mentioned yet, like manipulation of grade, which actually does impact on the basement question that Michael raised. I think the phrase you all used was walkout basement. And I live near a recent development that's going on right now. And it is very visible as a three-story building in the back. And so I think that the way you all have addressed this by including such basements is appropriate. And I think the other things you've done, Susan's touched on, in terms of kind of balancing, giving trade-off opportunities in terms of the bulk and the FAR are really good. And so I'm happy to see what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I could move on a little bit to the height, because it does, as Peter mentioned, it is very much connected. And I think it helps to illustrate some of the issues we're talking about with basements. So we, you know, in consultation with Robert, we pretty early on decided to look at building height as well, because we are seeing that not just in the village necessarily so much, but everywhere. I feel like I'm seeing, you know, a new home gets built, they build up the whole lot, then, you know, come in and regrade it, and then it's all of a sudden it's sort of up on a hill, totally zoning compliant, because the building height is measured from, you know, the new grade, but towers over its neighbors. And so we thought that it was worth kind of getting out in front of that. And so the change here is basically to change the definition of average grade. Average, yeah, right now it's average finished grade. So basically just would become average grade, and it would be either the, the average of the existing or the finished grade, whichever's lower, whichever's more restrictive. That is that new definition. And so with that change, there are other definitions that are tied to that, basement being one of them. So instead of being above the average finished grade, it would be above the average grade. So again, the sort of the pre-construction grade, before you made all kinds of manipulations to it. Similarly with cellar and then just overall building height. So basically what that means is that especially when you're thinking about building height, instead of building up the whole site and then starting from there, you would build, you could still build up the site, but you wouldn't basically, you know, get credit for that. You would have to count what the grade previously was, if it was lower. So it kind of disincentivizes that type of manipulation, which we think will disincentivize also walkout basements, which Peter was alluding to. So that it's not to say that you can't have habitable finished space as a cellar perhaps, you know, kind of sunk into the existing grade, as many homes are, but that you can't kind of build up the whole lot, put a walkout basement, you know, come out in the back. You've basically got a three-story house that is totally zoning compliant, but is really out of scale with its neighbors. So we think that those definitional changes, they're really just tweaks to a few of the words. We think that they would really have an impact on that potential development. And when you combine them with FAR, we think that that'll, it'll have an effect on controlling the bulk. Again, it doesn't mean that you can't have a finished, I call it basement, even though it's not going to be a basement by a parson's standard, but you can have finished space. But you can still have finished space. It would just be in a cellar rather than a basement, and therefore it wouldn't count toward your FAR. So that's, that's building height and grade. Any questions on those? And then we have one more tiny little, very, very minor change that we caught.
We've never had an example of like the London problem of people going more than one story deep underneath their structure.
I'm going to defer to Robert on that. I don't think that you've seen that type of thing, where you've, you've had like a sort of a sub-basement. I'm not sure how feasible it would be from an engineering perspective.
Our zoning currently exempts anything wholly below grade anyways. So the impact of bulk, if they went lower, would more have a structural issue than any to impact on bulk of zoning.
Missile silo or habitable root cellar?
A wine cellar. Small to the wine cellars if they feel like their house is too small.
Okay, you can build a cellar below grade.
Yes. Michael, did you have something to say?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry to go back to this. I may be looking at a different file than the one you're showing, but the one that I, that I was reading for today, sounds to me like sellers are counted in FAR for both existing and new homes. Is that not correct?
If you look at the definition of floor area, which is, if you have the memo, it's on page four, and it lists a whole series of things which are excluded for area. And sellers is number three.
Okay.
And also basement areas that are only used for storage. So those, those aspects of the basements would not count toward FAR.
Okay. So there's that piece right there, right, Susan?
Yes. Exactly right.
Okay.
See, and you see in one and two where, you know, under existing homes, the attic, you know, doesn't count. New homes, it does.
And again, Michael, it's not by any means epidemic, but we, you know, we've had a bunch of circumstances over, over many years where for zoning reasons, someone had an incentive to get a bulldozer out there and change the grade of the land. Build it up in one place in order to create an average mean grade that allowed them to do something that wouldn't otherwise be allowed. So essentially we're saying, you're going to get, you're going to get assessed from a zoning standpoint based on the way the land is when you start. And therefore, take away an incentive to say, well, hold it. If I build a, a big mound over here, I could, I could gain some benefit.
Which can also cause all sorts of drainage issues.
Yes.
As I know.
Okay, so yeah, I was misinterpreting the strike-throughs on that memo, I think, on the sellers part, the part about sellers.
Yeah, it's, and I apologize. It can get confusing when you have that, when you're showing sort of the new ordinance. I don't know of a better way to do it, but it's not the easiest.
What you're identifying, Michael, is that a zoning text is one of the more thrilling pieces of reading material in the life of Insomnia.
Yes, great, great reading material when you have insomnia.
I like histories of document threads with multiple editors. It's actually something I do study in my regular life, so I enjoy it.
Nice.
Point where the right things-
Yeah, you'll never see anything more patchwork than typical zoning codes.
I thought it went history is a multiple thread with, is a thread with multiple editors, but no proofreader.
That's true. That's true.
You don't want a proofreader. That just slows down the process.
There was one final, very minor change, but we thought it was, well, minor in terms of it's such an easy change, but it actually could be important. And it's, it's something that Robert discovered in the parking and loading table, where it looks like at some point, I don't know whether it was general code, who does your, you know, your online ordinance, or some sort of mistake a few years ago where the title on the loading portion of the table was removed. So there's a few spaces at the bottom of that parking and loading table where it's, it's for loading, it's not for parking. And it says, I don't have it right in front of me, but it says like one space per 20,000 square feet. Well, that's a loading space. But because the title has been removed, it looks like you're talking about parking. And, you know, I'm sure Robert interpreted that correctly if it comes to him, but better to just fix it and have no confusion that we're talking about loading, we're not talking about parking. So I had to kind of put in the whole table, but that's the only change, is just to add that subtitle back.
Right.
Healing with quick-
Clarification as opposed to a modification.
Yeah, we figured while we were in here making changes, might as well make this one.
Saves us money with general code. Thank you. You have any thoughts, Russ?
I, two, two comments I'd like to make. On the higher end of the chart of lot sizes, when you get close to like half-acre lots, it seems pretty generous. You can build a 6,000-plus square foot home, even more than that, I think, almost 6,400 square feet, which seems kind of generous. And when you compare it to some of the other towns, we're kind of on the high end. Yeah, 6,300 square feet. And then up higher, when you see the FARs for all the other towns, that seems maybe more than we want to consider, but maybe that deserves another look. And the other question I had was, are there any particular criteria for seeking a zoning variance from these restrictions? Or is it just the ordinary course of business for them?
I think the criteria would be the same for all zoning variances. I used to have a laminated card about New York State criteria for zoning variances, but, but they would be similar to any other existing bulk standard. On, on the high end, Russ, I think you are correct. I mean, it is a bit more generous than some of the peers, and we could certainly bring that down. It's kind of proportional as you start from the bottom and go up, but it doesn't necessarily have to follow that, that straight proportional line. We could certainly come down a bit when you get, for example, maybe over 20,000 square feet or maybe even less. We could tweak those. There's no kind of, you know, science to it. It's, it's sort of what the village is comfortable with and the balancing that with, you know, with non-conformity. But I think non-conformity tends to be less of an issue on the higher scale anyway.
I wondered about that too, but it's hard for me to, to picture it sometimes, just based on the numbers themselves.
Right.
I would support Russ's comment there.
And that really is, it's only in this realm where our proposed FAR is below the current median, is well above the current median. So we have relatively few lots of 20,000 or feet or above. But two, two things and two future issues. One is we do have some, and secondly, some communities, not so much here, but some communities have had a, a pretty substantial number of circumstances where people assemble to lots and then join them, right? Do you see much of that in your other communities, Susan?
I see it where you may have two undersized lots, and you put them together. I tend to see more of the opposite, where you have an oversized lot, and then they try to get a subdivision to undersized lots.
Part of that is the value of the lots are so high that it's-
Right, exactly.
Takes a lot of money to buy two of them, so.
Yeah. So we could definitely tweak that as you get 20,000 square feet and above. So it is a little bit closer to the median.
With these half-acre, that's about a half-acre, right? Half-acre lots and up, maybe, are we talking about how many lots here in the, in the village boundary? 10, 20? I don't actually know, but it can't be that many, right?
I think it's more than that. I don't have the number.
More than you might think. I can send you, Michael. Susan gave me the data download in an Excel file, and you can see how many there are. I mean, first off, there are some very big lots that are owned by, you know, institutions or utilities or CON Ed, whatever. There are more half-acre lots than you might think. Obviously not nearly as many as in lots of places, but- All right, so is anyone disagree that it would be worth tweaking those three numbers a little bit?
Well, I kind of looked at the resulting square footage of the size house that you can build. So if the average house in town is 2,000 to 3,000 square feet, let's just say for argument's-
Which I think is believably true, right?
And even if they're close together, they all look like sort of normal average-sized homes. You know, so it might be too dense for a small lot, but it's just that it's a similar bulk of a house, and it's either closer to its neighbor or it's not. When you get to 4,000, 5,000, you're entering sort of the McMansion category. So maybe, I don't know what the threshold is, and I know it's a gradual scale, but I think that's the area of concern when you start getting oversized, whatever that might be, 5,000, 6,000 square feet. That's a really big house.
Right.
And maybe it's worth getting a little bit more restrictive at those, not just at the 20,000 level, but, you know, take a look at the maximum gross area numbers on the right side of this chart. And that's kind of what I was looking at, is, you know, at what point does it seem out of context for our village?
It would be interesting to have a sense of what the average house size is on those existing lots to get a sense of, you know-
We know that.
Okay, well-
This, I'll get back to it there. Right? Here's the, here's the existing median FAR, right?
So what does that translate into?
Oh, you mean in terms of an average house size? Well, you'd have to, you multiply it times the lot, the lot size, and that's the floor area.
Quarter, so 5,000 square feet on a 20,000 square foot lot.
Right. So, so our existing median on a 20,000 square foot lot, and again, I don't know how big the sample size is, is 5,000 square feet, right?
Right.
And, and then at the moment, slightly smaller probably, only 1,000 square foot more. And then smaller yet on the 22,000 square foot, so. You know, what I'm suggesting is that you could, you could build a house half again as big as the, as the median.
Right.
Right?
Right.
If I could just.
Go ahead, Robert.
Yeah, I just wanted basically to help maybe explain the current development that kind of. At the point 295, because that property is just over 20,000. That roughly is 6,000 square foot house total, basement, attic, first, second floor. That current house out there is probably close to 8,000 square feet in volume.
Wow.
So that FAR, as we established, would probably significantly drop that house down to more reasonable what has occurred in that immediate vicinity.
Right. Yeah, I also, I want to be clear that there's no FAR now. So what's controlling these houses currently is building coverage. And if you were to go to, I think, page three, you can see again that, that table that shows the difference. And I'm not saying I think Russ is right. I think we should tweak at the higher end. You can see what someone could build now. So, you know, in that, that largest lot size with a building footprint of, you know, 4,300 square feet, you know, that's almost a 9,000 square foot house. Not even necessarily counting the basement and the attic. They could be built today. If, if, if the FAR was done according to the scale that you have in front of you, that, that number comes down to, you know, total square footage of 6145. So again, a very, a large house, definitely a large.
Very around figures. It's that same analysis Robert just referred to.
Right.
Existing project.
Right. So if we were to come down on the FAR, particularly the higher end, then, then you would see control of the home size even more. Which is totally reasonable.
And again, I mean, those are, those are definitely the unusual circumstance in our recent history, but who knows what the future holds, right?
Yeah. And we had run some numbers earlier, I can go back and look at them, that were a little stricter on FAR. I was getting concerned with the creation of nonconformities, so we can provide those to you as well.
All right. Well, so is it, is it a reasonable way forward, Susan, to take a look?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, we can definitely. It's just, it's just plugging in numbers to spreadsheets.
Sounds like folks are pretty comfortable in this realm and it all seems to make sense. I mean, in the end, our, our goal out of all of this is not to, you know, harm anyone, but just to try to keep future development in, in, in some reasonable context.
Yeah, and you can, you can continue tinkering once it's adopted. You can liberalize FAR, you can tighten it up. My community, we liberalized. I felt we went too far. I want them to tighten it a little bit, so yeah. You can always tweak it as time goes on. And the architects will, will find all kinds of ways to work with it.
All right. So some of those comments are that B F J will take a look at this higher end and come back with slightly more restrictive proposal. I don't think we're talking about a dramatic tightening, just tweaking it tighter. Does that sound right, Russ?
Yeah, yeah, that's just at the higher portion of it.
Yeah.
To stay within the realm of what makes sense for the small village.
Michael Pepperd, I don't know if you know Russ. I should have introduced him upfront. He's the Chair of our Planning Commission.
Yep. And only by name, but it's nice to put a face with it. Thanks.
All right. Anything further on that?
Well, I was just going to note that you have it on your agenda for the, the full meeting to go ahead and declare lead agency, which will begin the secret process. And it's fine to go ahead and do that and we can still tweak the zoning. It's not, it's not final until you hold a public hearing on it.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay with that? I certainly am.
If, if we're kind of wrapping this up, just to satisfy my one question, maybe Robert could write to me personally about how many, how many properties we're talking about in this over half acre or over 20,000 foot range? Because I, I don't want to kind of legislate based on, you know, a small number of property owners, or at least if we're going to do that, I want to be prepared for who they are and.
You know what I'll, I'll do, Michael? I'll send you that spreadsheet that is.
That'd be great.
Data.
Okay, that's great. Thanks.
Fine, you can get lost in it for an hour or two.
I was gonna say, it's a.
I just don't want to make, yeah, it's that whole like, I don't want to make a rule based on exceptions sort of thing, you know?
Yeah, understood. All right. I thank you, Susan.
Thank you all. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Likewise, appreciate you. All right, Jeff. Let me share the screen.
Peter, I have an updated one.
Oh, okay. You want to share it or?
Sure. So this drawing here is the south end of the parking lot, which of the Memorial Plaza, which we've pretty much all have, I think, agreed upon a layout.
We're having trouble hearing you, Jeff, or at least I am.
Something happened with the volume. It suddenly got lower.
So we have had agreed that we were going to hold the curb line along the railroad side of the parking lot and work our way out. Doing, doing such, and then holding the memorial side, it allows for a five foot island in the center of the memorial parking.
So just, I should have set this in context for Michael. We've had a lot of discussions about how Memorial Plaza could change, and a lot of those revolved around the idea of the civic space and the Manville Road project that would close the slip lane. But engaged in that was also a discussion about the south end of the lot, that is between Bedford Road and the gazebo, both to maximize parking, to improve traffic flow, and also to address what's happening now and what the permanent solution seen will be when the building next to the post office is complete, which has an impact on the street parking and which creates a new and quite nice walkway that takes you from Memorial Plaza down to Cooley Street and the Key Food Area. So what we're talking about now is, is the possibility that there is logic here to doing some of this part now, because it's really unrelated to the civic space piece, but would feed into it if, if and when that happens. Fair to say, Jeff, have I got that?
Correct. And last year, we, DPW, we did this opening here in the Memorial Plaza, so that's already in place. So what we're talking is this area down here curbing, extending the sidewalk, because right now there's a drop curb that dumps people into the parking lot. This would allow people to come through the, up to the curb and loop around. So I, I've looked at what it would take to do this, redo the curbing here, redo the curbing around the gazebo. We've also had from Wagner and Hodgins, they specked out the lights for the area that would also go tie into the civic space. So I've looked at trying to get some of this work done. We have a contract to do concrete work for our sidewalks and curbing throughout the village now, so I could do this work under the existing contract. Prices now are starting to go through the roof for all different kinds of work. Talked to a local builder and he actually said he's looking at building a house and just his wood cost is going up 60%. So I looked, I prepared an estimate, which I have very, fairly detailed estimate for doing roughly 600 feet of curb, 520 feet of sidewalk. A part of this work would require putting in some new drainage down in this area because we're redoing the island and tying to this existing catch basin. I actually went to the company to get price quotes or, you know, see what the light fixtures would cost us. So I, I've broken, I have a real, I'm detailed down to leveling washers, nuts and bolts. I sat down with our electrician to ask him about the conduit and the lighting layout that I've proposed. If he was comfortable with it, because he would do the actual final electric work. I'm looking at a cost here to do redo this curved island around the gazebo, this sidewalk, put in two handicap spots, this island, run in the conduit, the footings, complete light fixtures. I've also, I know, Peter, I've mentioned that we've, I've shown actually three locations for pay stations, so we could ultimately eliminate the parking meters that are on the island. So I'd put one down here that would cover the southern end, one right here that would cover the middle of the parking lot, and then one up here which would cover, so the three pit, three future pay stations. So I've put in the conduit for that conduit purchase. Looking at about $126,000 complete to do the entire project, with the majority of that being done in-house by DPW. We're looking curb, curbing about $22,000, $23,000. Sidewalk about 75. Drainage, 44, $4,500. The big thing that would be is your electrical work. You have a lot of lights. The fixtures that were specked out cost about $2,700 each. So we got 15 light fixtures that we'd have to do, and we'd only be putting in 12 with this proposal. But I said to Eric that, you know, these three here that we would wait until we did this island, if we don't purchase those lights now in this project, it's, you know, the civic space project gets delayed and these light fixtures change, then we're going to have a mismatch of lights. I'd rather have the lights and I can store them on the side for now.
Right.
So that would get you this, it would get you all the conduit. The reason I'd have to put the lights in on this side, the light fixtures that were specked by the architect are single head fixtures. So currently, we have double headed fixtures on the island. So you would be losing light. This would all become sort of a dark area. So I've incorporated their layout into this project. So you're looking at the 100 and roughly 126, and that's on the high end. You're looking at roughly 72,000 is for the lights and the electric work.
Right. And Jeff, how long do you think it would take to do it and how you do it in stages? And how disruptive is it as, as you're going through it?
Minimal disruption, because what I would do is come over here, put barrels. Basically, these are deep spots and you have a 20 foot aisle. So I could bring out two foot out on this side. And if I brought out two foot on this side, that's more than enough to get my mini excavator in there to do the excavation. You're only talking going down, you know, 20, 22 inches to get the conduits in. Footings, I got to go down five feet. But it would be limited disruption and quite honestly, with the climate in the, you know, the openness now of the parking lot, because people are working from home, now is the best time to get this project done with.
Right.
Disruption.
So again, just for Michael's benefit, but everybody's benefit to be reminded, what happens here is we narrow that central median and lose the trees that are in the median right now, which are, are, it's been a tough place to keep trees alive. They certainly have never prospered, but it's a loss. There's no doubt about that. In exchange for that, we end up with angled in parking on both sides along the Grant Street Memorial Plaza route. And among the benefits that offers is, is the fact that now when people back out, they are not backing out perpendicular to traffic, but angled in, as happens now on, on Washington and Wheeler. And the other advantage from the traffic standpoint, although perhaps a disadvantage in the view of some, is it would mean that when you back out of an angled space, you're committed to going in, pulling, pulling forward in one direction. What we have right now, and you can see it on farm market mornings, folks back straight out, and when they want to go in the direction of the opposite lane, they back up, block the first lane, and then wait till they have a moment to back into the other lane in order to pull, pull in the direction they like to go. So for example, if you're parking against the median, your only way out is to head out to Manville. And if you're parking against the post office side, your only way out is to head out to Bedford.
We have Jeff build the civic space too?
Well, first of all, we get a little more landscaping down here where this bump out is. So that would become a little bit of landscaping. I, my suggestion, and I talked to Kathy Dinko and Eric and I met out the gazebo with her, would be to continue this hedgerow along here to get some more landscaping and sort of to block the train tracks and, you know, make it a little more nicer. If you look at the gazebo area, right now, that circular area is the current gazebo. The square area would become, so there would be a little more planting in there for Kathy, which she was comfortable with. In the future, this little island here, we put angled parking, so this island more than doubles in size. So ultimately, there could be some landscaping in this area. What we need to understand is we have a farmer's market out there. Number one, the area gets walked on quite a bit. We're not going to control people, you know, walking across the, the medians, which they do now. That's why it's very difficult to have grass and trees grow in there. This entire area, and I still haven't been able to figure out, the entire Memorial Plaza and Memorial Street is one large concrete slab. When they constructed, there's probably six to eight inch thick concrete, and then we have two inches of asphalt over that. So that's what is going to, that's why these trees in the lower islands and even in the current island are not growing. There's no place for the roots to grow. So when we pull this out, we could pull out all this concrete to get some nice vegetation that would be able to grow to a point. So, you know, we do have that and ultimately.
Do you think that could include a couple of trees potentially?
In here? Correct, yes. And then, you know, this is the ultimate, would be the civic space area here where this sidewalk would come out. And so you'd limit to, this crosswalk would eventually be here. This crosswalk over here would leave. And then you'd have the main crosswalk here. So we're actually sort of creating better crosswalk areas. And then you would have, we have this crosswalk down here at the intersection of Bedford and Memorial. So the crosswalks would be more, better placed. We've talked with the county bus. Eventually, the goal is to take the bus stops down here, eliminate those, so we'd have a little more parking. And the bus stop would be actually by the crosswalk, which would be a safer pedestrian crossing. You get off the bus, you're ready to crosswalk to either go this way or while the bus is there, traffic is stopped, you cross the plaza. So it's, and the amount of bus traffic is limited. We've looked at that. So there's very, you know, limited time that would be blocked. very, you know, limited time that would be blocking traffic for the bus stop. So all in all, I think it would be a much better, I do show a little concrete area here for people to wait. Worst case scenario, inclement weather, people could go up into the gazebo during inclement weather and stay dry and they could see, have full access for the bus coming in either direction. And then just get out. So it, I think it works out well.
Jeff, I have a question. Do you think uh, on the train station side of the parking lot, twenty feet is enough to pu- to back out of those spaces?
Over here? Yes.
Cause I thought standard was twenty-four in a nor- in a standard lot.
No, not with one-way park, one-way. Remember, there's one-way traffic.
Right. I, I know. That's why I was asking. Okay.
Yeah, i- it's actually, I'm not, Peter, I, I mean, uh, Russ, I haven't changed that aisle at all. That, that aisle is staying the same here. So this aisle right there is staying the same.
Okay.
What's existing. What we've done is we've held this and we made the change on this side of the island. So I'm gonna replace this curb in kind where it is now. So all this on the interior remains the same as far as dimension wise.
And then uh, one point of clarity is the, the perpendicular parking, the current condition will remain the same. Really, we have to wait for uh, Seventy Memorial to do uh, their side of the street before, you know, this, this grand plan uh, takes effect.
Correct.
Emily has a question. In the grass space next to the train tracks, which will be re-landscaped, would you consider some shade trees and some benches?
Well, we do have some benches on these concrete slabs. Um, I think we sort of this, you know, discussed like there's the pine tree down here that's the life expectancy. There's nothing really left on that pine. Um, we considered the hedgerow along here and I don't see why, you know, we do have some utilities in there. We do have irrigation. Um, that's why I'm trying to keep the electric as close to the sidewalk. So I'm not affecting the landscaped area, gives us uh, maximum, you know, ability to do some type of plantings.
And ultimately, if we're able to do the civic space according to the design we have now, there would be some shade trees there as well. Do you know, do we know from Seventy Memorial Plaza if they, if we've reached any agreement in terms of their plantings? We had that meeting with the architect back in the day. They were gonna put some things in front of their property potentially.
Yeah, that's uh, tha- that's our, our property. So it's our right of way. So we really dictate um, what we wanna put. I know one of the concerns Jeff has is that the proximity to the utilities.
We, we had that, uh, you know, we, we really can't plant anything in the ground. It would have to be a planter.
A planter. Yeah, I think that's right. I remember.
Cause I have
Yeah.
water, sewer, gas and electric all in this area. So, you know.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know if Seventy Memorial had won anything too big in front of their building. They'd probably, you know, they'd wanna showcase that building.
Well, I guess the concern was losing those trees in the median and how to try and balance it out a little bit aesthetically, you know?
That's this hatched area here we had talked about, took that spot away. We could do a planter over there.
Right.
Um, you know. So that was, you know, trying to do something in that area. Again, you know, I talked to Kathy, we'd have to do low planting in this area for site distance. You know, potentially you could get a tree in this area and it gets decided to gazebo.
I think it looks great overall though.
Yeah, I, I, I am of the view that we should go ahead and do it.
Me too.
Any other comments on that subject? What do you think, Russ? You think it's uh?
Oh, I like it. I think it's great. I think you're picking up, I don't know what the parking count is, but when it's all in, it just south of the gazebo, I'm sure you'll have a net positive in parking spots.
Emily says she loves it. We're it. So done, done Emily.
I'm doing a lot of different things, so I'm going in and out, but I love the idea of, of re-landscaping that while, until it's time to do the big civic project, at least make that space a little prettier, you know?
Well, and it'll improve the, the, the flow of things too as well.
That's great.
Um, it's eight o'clock and we have uh, some uh, quite a few people uh, signing on because of a happy evening tonight when we spar into police officers. So I think we should uh, move on. Jeff, I thank you. This is good work as always.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. And yeah, let me know what, how you wanna go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks all.
Okay, we're back in work session. Vito, how are you? You're, you're muted. I don't think of you as a muted guy. Now you're unmuted.
Got better?
All right.
I'm doing very well. Things are going well. Um, we're we're happy with the uh, the progress. And now we just have to, you know, get over this one little hurdle so we can get prepared for the, the next phase of the project.
Yes, steel's going up. It's looking impressive. All right.
We had a rough winter, but we weathered it and uh,
No pun intended.
Yeah, exactly.
So who will describe what's needed or wanted?
I think Al should do that.
Okay.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Uh, I have a picture that I would like to share with you guys. How can I show you guys the uh, picture so everybody could understand the logistics? Okay, perfect. This is showing on the south side, the Memorial Plaza Street. And what this is showing is the location for the crane that we will need to assemble the northeast corner of the building.
So just for reference, this is Memorial Plaza and this is the post office, right?
Correct.
So this is the Memorial Plaza side of, of the construction site. And over here is the building that has Taco Project in it.
Correct. Um, we are gonna bring a hundred and ton, a hundred-ton crane. It's a smaller crane to the one that you see on site right now. Um, we will need uh, the crane to uh, work from the street to be able to erect the northeast corner of the building.
Uh-huh. In order to reach this zone?
Correct.
Right.
Yes. And a crane like this, uh, when you finish the operation of the crane, um, the standard is just to move it to the side and leave it parked. So the impact on the street, on the community can be a smaller. Uh, to put together and break down the crane is a tedious process that takes a long time. And also you cannot just drive the crane around the block at the end of the day because crane will be way too heavy. It will affect utilities on the street. It, it will be uh, an impossible. Um, we locate the crane on this way, when, where you can see the outriggers for the crane right against the curb. We had to do it on that way because we don't want the outriggers to go into the sidewalk. Uh, we all know the conditions of the utilities that are on Memorial Plaza. And if we get the crane closer to the building, um, when the crane is on, is on operation, the loads of the crane can affect the utilities that are in place.
Which is here. You're trying to avoid this, right?
Yes, the infu- space that you see.
Right.
Yes. And uh, this work to erect this northeast corner of the building shouldn't take longer than two weeks. Um, our plan is that the end of the day, we will shift the crane and park it next to the gazebo. Um, to park the crane, we will need five parking spots.
So you would park it here?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So.
And that will be overnight.
How, so during the day, can cars pass through here?
It would be the same as the concrete operations. Uh, when we were doing the foundation for the building, we had a uh, pump, we set it up on the street. Um, we put two flagmets. You can see it on the, on the drawing. And we will have a flagman directing the traffic. And it will be open for only, with only one line of traffic.
Okay, so here and here, so this, and, and the, the, the time of operation is, is this Monday to Friday, seven to three or something? What is it?
Yeah, seven uh, thirty maximum, uh, the latest we start. And by four o'clock, we will be wrapping up.
So at the end of the day, you, you would move?
I need to say just one hour. So we don't have to go back to the street the next day. I think it's something that is smart to do.
So at the point at which you leave, you'd have a flagged person on both sides anytime it's blocking the street?
Correct.
And, and that cars could get around it? Again, one lane traffic. Uh, wh- what would be the circumstance with these parking spaces? Would they have to be kept vacant?
Yes.
Would all of these have to be kept vacant?
Only during the crane operation.
Meaning when you're literally lifting something?
Uh, meaning when the crane is set up on the street and is on operation. Yeah, as soon as the crane is set on the street, we need to block the parking uh, on that area on the east side of Memorial Plaza. And uh, we will do the same that we did before. We will um, install the orange uh, barrels with the yellow tape. So the pedestrians can go across the street and walk right next to the parking car.
Okay, so what should we envision? That these would have to be marked essentially no parking Monday to Friday bef- before X time? And that these spaces, the ones you need to park the crane over here later in the day, would be no parking at all for two weeks?
Um, I will do the same that I did uh, for the foundation phase with Robert Hughes with the chief for the building department. When we submit the permit, we submit the permit for the week. And uh, then I'll work within the exact days that we are gonna use it. Uh, we may use it only on one week, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. And then the following week, Tuesday and Wednesday. It would be something like that. So uh, like before, you guys will put the uh, cover on the meters, the day that we are gonna need it. And if we are not uh, using the crane and the crane is in, in park position, then there is gonna be plenty of parking space to be occupied by the residents.
So it would not be every day for two weeks. It would be some days over two weeks.
Correct.
But the total time period would?
Is that we install the columns first, then we install the beams. Once the columns, uh, the columns and the beams are installed, we have to take a couple of days off because we need to plumb the steel. We need to snap the bolts. We need to install the Q deck. So the, the floor is receive the material for the next floor. So it's, it cannot be a continuous operation with the crane. There is a man work that has to be done to receive more material by the crane.
Okay. Um, Robert, what's your take on all this?
All right. Um, we all met out there at the site. I say all with um, Eric, myself, Jeff O'Conne, the police chief. The operations during the foundation went very well, as the chief could attest to as well. Um, being that this will not be consecutive days, it's a period of days. They have had the applications in prior. They've given us time to make sure that the parking spaces are closed off. They've done a great job of doing that. Um, there were multiple concrete pores from Memorial Plaza. It seemed to go over very well. The flagmen were out there. Nothing's went out, a couple of hiccups here and there, but overall, I think it went very well. And I think this will be a minimum time. I think they've done a good job overall as far as spreading out the use of the crane. So a building of this side can get built without, you know, a minimum impact. And ideally, we've also gained a lot with the current situation. So it's probably still.
Say, if they're helping, this is one of the very, very few advantages of a pandemic. It has reduced parking demand by a lot.
I think the issue really would be the um, uh, storage of the crane in the spaces more so than actually operation of the couple of days during that two-week period.
And is there any, there's no alternative for that? Wh- wh- when would this happen?
This is something that will be happening in the next three or four weeks. Uh, it's gonna depend on the weather. Uh, when it's raining, uh, you cannot uh, work on the steel. The crane cannot operate when it's above twenty-five miles winds. And the other thing is that um, when it's uh, windy, um, it's, depends on the weather. Rain and wind, they don't mix together with the steel.
And once, once the steel is up, will you need a crane in a later phase of the building or is this it?
Um, we will need a crane like this, we won't need it anymore on the job. What we are gonna need in the future is gonna be uh, a knockaboom to load sheetrock and some materials that will go into the building. But the uh, once we finish with the crane, the impact on the community is gonna be much, much smaller.
Okay.
And uh, and we're also in our sequencing, once the steel's all up and the building's wrapped, windows are in, the section on Cooley Street is the area that we're gonna leave open so that we can bring all the machi- a, a, a majority of the material into the job. Will be coming in off of Cooley.
Great.
So that will, so it won't disrupt Memorial. And then eventually we'll cl- we'll, we'll finish that that little section of the building as, as we're moving our way from Memorial to Cooley.
Okay, that all sounds good. Uh, y- you suffered through the conversation back and forth about whether we'll have a fire department parade on Friday, June four. But if we did, uh, having this in the way would be an issue. Do you think Friday, June four is likely to be in your crane world?
We don't know yet, but if the town has something, um, something like this organized and it's gonna happen, uh, our steel company will have to work around it. You're gonna have to break down the crane and.
All right. It, it, again, it may, it may turn out that leaving it in its parking space would be okay. The gazebo is normally the reviewing stand for the parade.
See, but Peter, that particular day, we can slide the crane down towards where the word curb is.
Yeah, over here.
Yeah, so we can put the crane there. So it's away from the gazebo. See, the biggest thing with the crane, once it's loaded with two hundred tons of counterweights, you can only drive it a certain distance.
Yes.
And it's like two hundred feet. It's not a lot of footage that they allow you to drive the crane.
Kills the gas mileage, I'm sure.
Yeah, no, it does a lot more than that, but so I believe that we can definitely, on that day, you know, when we'll just pa- we'll park the crane, you know, to the Southmore.
I got a perfect solution here. Uh, you'll park it to the Southmore, you'll lift it up and hang a big American flag on the end of the crane. And it will be a celebratory, celebratory portal entering uh, Memorial Plaza for every fire department, huh?
I think, I honestly, I think the crane operator, you know, I would imagine that he would be all for hanging a, a flag off the crane and they probably have boatloads of them because you guys do all this kind of stuff.
Uh, that's correct.
He's one of the largest crane operators in Westchester County. So um, um, you know, so we can, I know it's a joking thing, but it's, it could be kind of.
No, I, I wasn't totally joking. I mean, I think it would probably be.
Very cool.
Rather than, rather than having it sit there uh, as a, as a ghostly Hulk, it could, it could have a purpose. Anybody else have comments, questions?
How long again would this last?
It will be two weeks for the crane on the street.
Okay. That's it.
Anybody else? I mean, it, it's a, uh, it's okay with me.
Yeah, sounds pretty straightforward to me.
I'm good with it. And I wanna thank all of you for all the good work that they're doing over there. Um, I love seeing the updates and hearing from everyone how professional everything has been. So I really appreciate that. Um, great construction and look forward to seeing the end of it.
You know, and I really appreciate that. And we've never met and I know Peter knows me very well. I know Robert knows me very well watching this project. And that's my goal. My goal is to always make whatever we do in Pleasantville the most beautiful that I, that I possibly can and not cut corners anywhere. And I think I've, I think I've lived up to that and I can't wait to live up to this one too. So I appreciate.
You have, so.
Mr. Eric, you actually bring up a really good point, which is we're gonna update villagers uh, in the next week or so. Uh, including on a, all the development. Do you have an idea of when you, when this might be finished, complete now?
You know, we're. You know, we're, now that we've gotten started full-time with the winter being behind us, um, I could have Al, you know, send you guys an email of what, you know, for that, so you have it.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Bring on all two hundred tons of it, subject to whatever requirements Eric and and Robert and Jeff uh work out, but it sounds like everybody's on the team, so.
Okay, perfect, great, thank you.
It'll be fun. Do you have a webcam monitoring, you're recording your progress over time?
Yes.
All right, that'll be fun.
How many, how many cameras we have on the job, Al? Uh, six, eight? Four, four?
Four on the, on this face. But then we're gonna have more cameras as we get, you know, continue erecting the steel.
Well, I look forward to the time lapse.
Yes.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right. Thanks to everybody. We're gonna sign off and head to executive session. Eric sent an email uh with the call-in info. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Robert.